Congratulations.
All right. And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the pride of the United States of America, to the public for which it stands, one nation, united as one with every nation.
Okay, are there any changes to the agenda? Shall we approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
All right, without exception. Agenda's approved. Any public comment on items that are not on the agenda? Hearing none. We now will step into closed session briefly. We're required by law to open the meetings like this and then go into closed session. So we'll be back in hopefully about 15, 20 minutes, if not sooner. See you in a couple minutes.
In tonight's closed session, the Board took formal action to accept the retirement of Superintendent Deborah Lindo, effective June 30, 2014.
Thank you. I believe we need a formal vote of the Board to accept that. So Lisa, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Vice President Simon?
Yes.
Member Dwin?
Yes.
Member Affeld?
Yes.
Member Kent?
Yes.
Okay. I think it's appropriate in a time like this to make a statement. And Board Member and President of the Board, Melody Dice, put together a statement that I'd like to read. First of all, Board President Melody Dice is deeply sorry that she's not able to be at tonight's meeting. As you may know, she's recovering from a surgical procedure, and I'm pleased to report that she's doing well and on the mend. President Dice requested that I share this statement with you. Tonight, our school community is informed that Superintendent Dr. Lindo will retire at the end of the school year on June 30, 2014. Deborah Lindo's been a proven leader with tremendous talent, energy, and integrity. Dr. Lindo has made great contributions to our district. Her leadership style is firm, focused, and elegant, and she models always an unwavering commitment to serve students. This Board faces a tall challenge in replacing Dr. Lindo. Yours is an ambitious and successful career, and we are confident that your intelligence and passion will continue to make a positive difference for children. The Board of Education has not determined the course of action it will take to identify and secure Dr. Lindo's successor. We will have our first discussion on this topic on November 8 at our Board meeting. I am resolved to oversee a process that includes a thoughtful communications plan to ensure that we keep our staff and school community informed and obtain input as we move through this upcoming transition. At this time and on behalf of the entire Board of Education, I want to recognize Dr. Lindo for her courageous leadership and remind everyone that the school year has just begun and that we still have a great deal of work to do for the next eight months and that Dr. Lindo remains our leader during this time. We will continue to trust and follow her lead. I also want to stress to our school community that the upcoming change does not alter our focus or our critical initiatives. We remain committed to a full integration and implementation of the Common Core state standards focusing on 21st century instructional strategies and realizing the dream of our Emeryville Center for Community Life. To be clear, we face a challenge in leadership but not in direction. And we thank Dr. Lindo for assisting us in setting this direction. Thank you, Dr. Lindo. So I believe that you also had a statement you wanted to make?
Yes, I did. I just want the entire Emery -- I just want the entire Emery USD community and the School Board to know that it's been an honor to serve this Emeryville family. In a way, it's been my second home, and I thank all of you for the opportunity to have --
-- have helped our students through this stage of their life and their educational development. I sincerely, sincerely appreciate the opportunity to have led this district. Over the next eight months, I do want to reiterate that I'm retiring, but the work isn't. We still have a lot of work to do, and I want to focus in on engaging the schools and the community in the development of our LCAP plan, our Local Control Accountability Plan, the rollout of our Common Core, our Smarter Balance Assessments, begin the construction of Phase One of the Emeryville Center for Community Life, and also the renewal of our parcel tax. I think those are really key, key projects that we'll be working on and over the next eight months. I also want just our exceptionally talented staff, both certificated and classified, to know how much I've appreciated them and their devotion to our students. I know our students will continue to thrive because of them and the work that each and every one of them does each and every day to support our kids. I also want to take this opportunity to thank the City Council and the City of Emeryville for truly embodying the district's adage, "Partners' power, students' success." I've never worked in a place where there was so much commitment to children and families, and it's quite impressive. Emeryville is a very, very special community, one that you should all be very, very proud of. With our bold and ambitious full-service community school vision, the Emeryville Center for Community Life, I truly, truly believe that we're all -- we're well-positioned to be a beacon in the region. We've got great philanthropic support from our business community. They consistently can support our schools, and I'm just grateful to have had this terrific opportunity to lead Emery Unified School District, so thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Are there any other comments on this item? If not, I will move on to what I think is a true celebration and a very exciting moment, which is swearing in our new student -- new student representative.
Student rep.
Excuse me.
Not superintendent yet.
But we do have board members who started as students, so I would like to invite Bria Williams-Mohler to come up, and it is my true honor to be able to swear her in.
Raise your right hand.
I am very honored to be calling these words that I would support in the same Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the California. If law and these foreign and messages are there to relate and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take the obligation without any obligation for purpose of these things, and that I will will willingly discharge it to leave the time of time of the Constitution.
Welcome, welcome. Bria, welcome.
All right. President Simon, before we get started, I believe Principal Will Chauvin has a comment to make about Bria.
Yes, I think a number of us have welcoming comments, but let us start with public welcoming comments. Then the Board will make some comments, and then we will ask Ms. Williams if she'd like to add any further comment.
It's an honor indeed to introduce to you, to give to you, Bria Williams-Mohler, that was our last Will Chauvin, Principal of Emery Secondary School. But just to think about Bria, how her smile lights up along, but it's not only that, it's the academic skills and her leadership skills that already had impact in the two months that she was in on our campus. She taught student government. She was very involved in getting students involved, which is takes a little time for most people to do that, but she's already achieved some of those leadership skills and qualities in the two months. The last time I was up here, so many people in the audience, so many people from Annie Yates spoke about how, you know, what an impact you've had and how, you know, how great you've been to this entire school district. So I just want to let you all know that you guys have a wonderful student on your board to sit here, and we all have great expectations for you as you sit here. All right, so congratulations.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public at this auspicious moment? Please?
Come to the podium.
Please speak to the mic.
Hello, my name is Bianca Williams-Holmberg.
Please speak to the mic.
My name is Bianca Williams-Holmberg, I'm a great mother, and I'm the daughter of my father. She is truly very proud. She's loved you, she's represented you guys very well. I felt I can love you three, and I actually have three in ten days after the end of my senior year. So, I mean, this is a great accomplishment, and I always knew that she could be special. All my children actually have three girls, and she's a major here. Thank you, baby, I appreciate you.
All right. Thank you. Are there other comments from the public? Seeing none, are there any comments from Board members? Shall we start with --
She's back!
Joy, I think, do your tears speak for you?
Yes, that was very sweet.
Yeah, and Member Affeld?
Oh, I just want to also welcome Bria. Really excited to have a student representative back on our Board. Our last one graduated, had a vacancy, but I'm especially looking forward to your bringing student perspective and a student voice into our meetings and venturing us on what an education in this district looks like from your perspective. And I also hope that you will make sure that you take back to students all the important things that go on here that, you know, sometimes might seem mundane, sometimes might seem very technical, but everything we look at in some way or another does have an important impact. Students' education, that's what we're here for. So glad that you're part of this, and if I can be of any assistance at any time during your time with us, please let me know, contact me, and I'm happy to help unlock some of the code that we speak in sometimes. And if it is code, let us know, and we'll make sure that we try to, you know, not speak. Thanks.
Well, Bria, you're my neighbor now, so you're going to be in trouble. No, Bria, I am so glad to have you here. I want to encourage you to speak up, to ask questions. You know, anytime you feel that you need to say something, say it. If you have questions, ask. If you want to ask me anything, ask me. I'm here for you. This is why we're all here. We're here, you know, for information for you, to help you be a very strong leader when you leave this district. You're homegrown, so, you know, personally, you know, I'm expecting a lot out of you, but I know you're going to, you know, you're going to accomplish all the goals that you set. And, I mean, we're just happy to, you know, have you here. You know, we're a lot of fun, we're easy to, you know, talk with, you know, we're easy to ask questions of, so, you know, don't feel intimidated. You just get up here and have fun and speak your mind, okay? All right, welcome.
And let me finish by saying I add my welcome, but also to say that this, having a student representative on the Board, is really a serious responsibility, and I'm glad that we have someone who is as thoughtful and as strong a leader as you are and as I've seen you to be in many years at Annie Yates, both a leader in doing fun things and a leader in the school in thoughtful ways, you know, when there's change that needs to happen. And it's very important, especially as we're in the time of change, to have strong leadership on the Board, to continue to remind the Board of the importance of the work and how the policies that we set, we don't run the school day-to-day, we set the policies. And those policies then have an impact in the day-to-day lives of the kids and the parents, and it's important to have that voice. So the things that you say do are important, and we listen carefully. So I'm very, very glad that you've joined us. I'm glad that you have two younger sisters who may join us someday, and I'm glad that the Board has maintained its commitment to doing this. And I echo Member Dwin and Member Affeld and Member Kent in saying that if you ever need help or don't understand something, there are no bad questions if it's a matter of "I don't understand." And for our part, we'll do our best not to talk in acronyms and other schoolies, so...
I got one other thing.
Yeah.
I want to thank your mother for raising such a good student that we can have her here and know that she's going to represent, you know, you, the district, and herself in a very, very, you know, honorable manner. So I want to thank you as a parent, you know, for doing the job that you done to get her here.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
If there's no other statements, I will move to the next item on the agenda unless Ms. Williams, would you like to make a statement? Please.
Thank you. What a darling.
I think we all as a Board must learn the lesson that brevity is as powerful as lengthy So let us now move to reports. Do we have any reports from the California, from CSEA? From the Emeryville Teachers Association, is there a report? From the Annie Yates PTO, is there a report? Is there a report from the Emeryville Secondary School PTO? Brenda, no report? There's not an upcoming fundraiser to report? No, all right. Student representatives report, so in the future, we have a standing item on the agenda so that if you ever have activities from the school or other issues at the school that you want to report, we keep an item on the agenda, so at every meeting, you have a place where, if you choose to do so, you can make a report. Superintendent's report.
Sure. So just a few announcements to make. The hearing screening van will be at Annie Yates and the Emery Secondary School tomorrow and Friday, so all parents should be aware that there's diagnostic hearing screening that will be taking place with our students. I want to just publicly thank our Nurse Lynn Perkins and Wellness Director Lynn Dunn for -- Juliet Dunn, excuse me, for coordinating this effort. Our new ESS chemistry teacher and chemistry and biology teacher is on board. Her name is Colette Mazer. She's not here tonight, but she is replacing our teacher and will be the teacher that left, and she'll be supported by our retired science teacher, Dr. Carol Balth. Tuesday, October 17, school sites participated in the Great California Shakeout, and just to let you know that that was a California and Alameda County-wide, in particular, emergency drill to make sure that the region is ready in the event of a full-blown disaster. The Emery Ed Fund, Wednesday, October 30, they will have their first Board meeting of the fiscal year, and they'll be voting and approving their audit and also new Board members. Let's see. From a state perspective, just remind everybody, let the community know that our ECCL project manager, Roy Miller, and I traveled to Sacramento last Tuesday afternoon to participate in Senator Lou's Senate Education Committee hearing on full-service community schools. It was quite affirming, you all need to know that, to be in a room full of folks who are committed to the same thing that we are. Sacramento is clearly, I mean, they are clearly excited about our project, and it was just a really, really positive opportunity to participate in that Senate hearing. And then, actually, I was wondering, I had a note here on reporting out around the homecoming activities, and I'm just wondering if Bria might wind up, might mind, impromptu, talking a little bit about that last week. I don't want to put you on the spot, no pressure, but if you...
Oh, okay. Last week at Emery Secondary School, we had our Spirit Week and, well, Homecoming Week, I should say, and we, it was actually --
Bring the mic a little closer here.
Oh, okay. It was a very nice turnout, and it was nice to just see everyone dressed up and take part in what we were doing every day, and the different, the different days of the themes were pretty cool, and I guess it was just different to see everyone taking part. And the homecoming rally was very entertaining and interesting, and it was nice to see every single grade that, sorry, it was nice to see every single grade actually participate in something and trying to get everything together. And the homecoming dance, which was Saturday, was nice, and we had our homecoming game right before the dance. It was really nice. No, no, that's why I didn't mention it.
Awesome.
Good job. Okay.
Terrific, that's it.
Superintendent, I have a question on one of the items you mentioned that I'm saving some time on the consent calendar. Is Mazer's position replacing Carol Balth?
No, no, she's not replacing Carol Balth. Dr. Balth will be supporting her as a mentor during the transition. She's a biology and chemistry teacher, credentialed.
Is she going to be at the Annie Yates then?
No, she'll be at the secondary school. We can bring up Mary and Harrell, our HR Director, to give you more details later.
Let's wait till we get to that. We'll do that on consent calendar.
If you want, when we get to the item.
The only question I had on it was temporary or permanent, full-time?
So...
Let's wait till we get to that on the agenda.
We'll wait till we get to that item, yeah. I just wanted everybody to know that, let the community know that we fill that position.
Okay. As, just a couple of quick announcements from, as Board, from the Board President. One, I want to make sure to let everybody know that on Wednesday, November 6, if you dine at Pasta Pomodoro, 20% of your, of what you spend will be donated to the Emeryville Secondary School. So that's Pasta Pomodoro at Bay Street, and it's a fundraiser for the secondary school. I also wanted to publicly acknowledge Member Kent for her recent wedding. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And I think that's it for my report.
Thank you.
Let's now move to consent calendar. Do I understand that, Member Affeld, you want to take off personnel actions?
And I have a question on item warrants as well.
Warrants, okay. Can I have a motion for items two and four?
So move.
Second.
Is there any objection? If no objection, then the matter is approved. Two and four are approved. Let's move to item one, warrants.
Just a quick question. I'm all in favor of supporting entertainment, and I think it's a good way to do it, for a $1,250 pizza item, and curious what is that one?
That was paid for out of the Food Service Department, so it must have been part of the lunch program at either the high, probably the high school.
Don't we have Revolution Foods for, it was from Roundtable?
Yes.
I thought it was a staff or maybe homecoming.
Snack bar.
Snack bar?
Snack bar.
Yeah, there had to be snack bar over a number of days, because I just fed my entire staff pizza with $660 for 130 people, so...
Maybe you can get back those for the...
We'll do that.
Yeah. But I could well imagine over two or three days with teenagers, pizza would go fast.
Well, actually, we have the snack bar every day, and it's, the pizza's available if you want it. You don't have to get it.
Ah, okay.
And do students purchase this pizza?
Yes.
So maybe we made money.
It's actually an income item as well.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
We can end up spending...
Why don't we come back to committee on this?
We'll do that.
Thank you. But good catch, thank you. Member Affeld, that's exactly why we have the warrants on, is to catch these kind of items. Let's move to the personnel actions.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Ms. Mazer is hired in full-time position. She is replacing the science teacher that left at the beginning of the school year with short notice or no notice.
Full-time?
Full-time, yes. Clear credential.
Excellent.
Thank you. And I know that that was a, it's always a difficult position for us to be put in, to try to find a fully-prepared teacher on short notice, so congratulations to you for doing that.
Thank you.
The, I thought one of the difficulties was that that position was 40%.
Not this year. That was like years prior this year, even when the school year began, that was always a full-time position. When we first posted it, it was always posted as a full-time position. You touched on it, science is just a difficult position to fill. Even when I was out contacting other school districts within Alameda County, I kept getting emails back, people were looking for science teachers of their own, so nobody could send me, send anyone to me. It's just hard to fill science positions. So, so far, I think we got lucky.
So, lessons learned, and how do we get lucky?
From what I'm hearing so far, I'm hearing that she's adapting well from where she was educated, the content and the direction of the coursework and the teaching style isn't aligned with our district's style and the way Dr. Balth would like to see our science program go, and the fact that we got a science teacher this late in the year.
Yeah, I guess my question was, what are we doing right that attracted her to come to Emery as opposed to...
educated, the content and the direction of the coursework and the teaching style isn't aligned with our district's style and the way Dr. Balf would like to see our science program go, and the fact that we got a science teacher this late in the year.
Yeah, I guess my question was, what are we doing right that attracted her to come to Emory as opposed to...
I can't say we did anything...
One of these other districts, many of them are...
I can't say we did anything special. She lives in the area. She's in Berkeley. I can't say that we did anything particularly special.
We just have great kids.
I'm going to think that's it, and we were nearby, and she just wanted to be close to her own community.
Physical package, is there any difference?
I, right now, if I were to say anything, I would simply be guessing. She came back to the area, we had an opening, she lived nearby, and everything just sort of lined up.
You know, I would like to...
And I don't want to guess. I really don't.
Yeah. I would like to add to this that in the, with the, after the panel interviews and then the one on, one interview that I had with her, she did express to me, I asked her, "Why Emory?", and she did say that she was very, very interested and impressed with the full-service community school and the work that we were doing, and she also liked that we were doing collaboration, and she liked the idea of a small school setting. So those were her three comments.
Collaboration?
She liked the, liked the great level, not the great level, just the collaboration for the high school. It had been talked about in the, in the first-round interview that she participated in, and so there was a question about collaboration. And she really liked that, and she also liked that she was going to be receiving support from, from Dr. Balf. And so those were just some of the comments that she made to me.
I have a question. Is that a standard question we ask when we interview staff?
I usually ask it in my, in my, in the final, in the final interview. It, I don't know...
And it's on, it's on the job, it's on the application.
Because I think, I mean, I ask that question because based on Member Affeld's question, I think if that is something that when we do hire teachers and either staff can just kind of mention, you know, the employee or the staff person says this is one of the reasons why they chose or like Emory, it can, you know, maybe answer the question for the Board, you know, why teachers are interested in coming to, you know, our district. I mean, I think full-service community schools would be a great, you know, attractor, but it would just be nice to know why, why teachers are interested.
Can I suggest we've got a great, a whole presentation on staffing as our first item coming up?
Mm-hmm.
So I think we can continue this conversation...
Right now.
Because I think it's, it's...
It's the next item.
This is a good intro. So with that caveat, may I hear a motion on items one and three of the consent calendar? No, we're going ahead and moving, moving the items with the caveat that a report will come back.
So that would be my motion, definitely, is to approve items one and three with subjects to the pizza item. I mean, guys, just wanted to ask...
Great. Is there a second? I'm looking for a second.
Second.
All right. Any objections? If there's no objections, then the matter is approved. Let's now move to Human Resources Department.
So this is our, this is our annual report, and our Director of Human Resources, Marion Harrell, is going to give her annual update on the comings and goings of her department.
Bless you.
Yeah, it's coming up.
Is it on?
It was coming up.
There you go.
I can't get, I can't see it up here. It's not. I think everything's still plugged in.
Hit the, hit the spacebar.
Oh, spacebar. Well, you know what? I think the slides are in your packet. And I will begin by saying that all teaching positions for the 1314 school year have now been filled. And I was going to say that the most difficult position to fill was the high school science position, and science positions are becoming increasingly difficult to fill even for large school districts.
I'm sorry, if you could speak to the mic so that they can hear in the television viewing audience.
Okay. I was just going to restate that all teaching positions for 1314 have now been filled, and the most difficult position to fill for this year was the high school science position, and science positions are becoming increasingly difficult to fill even for large districts. Next. Well, that was your slide for all of our positions have been filled. How do I go down to the next one?
He's on his way. Ryan's on his way.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think I got it. Okay. This, well, I guess I could go back. Well, part of our previous slide was that a lot of our teachers do have, our new teachers have beginning, bits of beginning teacher support and assessment for all new teachers who have preliminary credentials, and our district participates in the Contra Costa County Office of Education Bits of Induction Program. Then we moved on to staff notifications.
There you go.
This year, we've updated a lot of our staff notifications, such as emergency contact information. People move, people get married, things change, and this is information that sometimes isn't updated, but I've sent information out to make sure that we have updated information for those who submitted. Then we have, workman's compensation does what's called pre-designation, whereby if someone has an injury and they want to be seen by a particular doctor, that needs to be on file beforehand. Otherwise, Kaiser is our workman's comp provider. And in compliance with Affordable Care Act requirements, that everybody be notified by October 1, the information was sent to all employees. District employees who are employed in a position at 100% are mandatorily enrolled in our benefits programs. Employees who are employed 99, anywhere from 50 to 99%, have the option to enroll. But at any rate, the federal law requires that all private employers, elementary and secondary school, and institutions of higher education provide written notice to employees of how the ACA will affect them. Our medical benefits provider, hold on, I know it, it's right at the tip of my tongue. I'll get, it'll come back to me in just a minute. Provided me the information, and that was sent out. We have, upcoming this year, we'll, we will have... Oh, oh, what? Now, we, we have reached agreement with ETA on the 1213 reopeners. That was ratified by the bargaining unit and approved by our Board. We will be, ETA will be sunshining 1314 reopeners as well as the district. It may move into successor years as well, but for certain 1314. And CSEA and the district will be sunshining CSE articles at the next board meeting.
For what year?
For 1213 to begin, and for then, I believe they're looking at 1416.
The PISA program, we continue to offer a PISA program?
Our teachers who have preliminary credentials and need to clear, we are part of the Contra Costa County Office of Education Beginning Teacher Support and Assessment Program. So we do provide bits of support for all of our new teachers who need to clear their credentials.
How many is there?
Right now, I think we have maybe three, but I don't have, I didn't think to write the, to give you the names.
Are there any other questions from the Board? I have a couple. Member Dwin?
Yes. I have two questions. So you said that we've had, we filled all positions?
All teaching.
Teaching positions? Okay, not all positions.
The only position we still have available is the instructional assistant position for the computer media at Annie Yates. And we...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And we have a pool of three candidates that, whose applications are being reviewed for interview.
So what's, what about the PE teacher? Is that a position that's, is that, is that a position that's needed, but we don't have a open position for it? No?
That's still under assessment, and I believe our CBO will be bringing information to the Board about that position or about positions.
So that's not an open position?
No, so not at this moment, it's not.
Okay, okay.
If I may, I have the same question. When, when do we, should we expect to see that?
I believe you should be expecting to see that fairly soon, or that you'll be expected to have the conversation about it fairly soon.
I'm just recalling our, two board meetings ago, you were telling the Board you would bring back this, this question of PE costs.
Mm-hmm. I remember that request, yes, and the information is, the information is available, but the CBO would like to discuss that with the Board.
Okay, well, we, I guess we want to have that discussion before the end of the year because we had only hired a, a firm hire. We have to call it.
No, I understand.
Security monitor or a position for half a year.
You're right, the campus, the playground mon, yeah.
Right.
The noon-duty playground monitor, mm-hmm.
Okay. So hopefully we can have that, and that kind of figure out. I remember your inquiry.
Any other?
Hold on, I have another question. I don't know if he wants to answer it.
No.
Part of the difficulty for, for me is that the position has not been brought forward from the principal to cabinet. This was a request by someone out of the audience to the Board. If the Board would like to circumvent the process of the site administrators bringing needs to administration, the superintendent, that's fine, but I just am trying to honor the site administrator with regard to the request for personnel, is all. That's why you saw me shaking my head. It was like, we have not had a formal request from the site administrator with regard to this position.
So the conversation ever since was a request to hire a campus monitor, whereupon we embarked on a discussion about, is this the best next use of dollars? And some uncertainty, really, from staff and on the Board, whether it was, although it was an immediate need that we wanted to address and not hold up. So that's the conclusion was, we will hire this person through December, and then staff will go back and assess whether that was the next best use of dollars, whether PE teacher instead was needed, or some other position, and you would come back and, through going through the proper channels, have the right discussion with us, if in fact that, that, what, how we should be spending those dollars.
I do, I do recall the conversation with regard to coming back to the Board with regard to the security position. I don't, I personally do not remember the conversation with regard to the PE position.
There was one.
We did have a formal request with regard to, from the site administrator with regard to security. We haven't had that formal request from the site administrator with regard to the PE position.
Okay. My second question for Mr. Harrell is, how many employees do we have on workers' comp?
None.
None?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Are the students at Annie Yates getting physical education now?
As it's been explained, yes, they are.
Okay.
Would, if the, are we giving them, the middle school students 400?
Now, those specifics, I'm not able to answer.
They are meeting the, they are meeting the requirements. They're meeting the statutory requirements in terms of minutes. We, and that's, we can have the principal come back and review the schedule that she has, has with regard to PE, but we went over that in the fall, and she developed a full plan for that, for PE to be fulfilled, and Mr. Bonet has validated those minutes, so...
Is that 400 or is it too much?
Gosh. It's at 400? It's 400 minutes? Yeah.
I guess that, I mean, this has been an issue, it was an issue all last year.
Mm-hmm. Yes, it was.
Yes. I, I would like, I mean, for us to work, like, and we can issue that, but to know if this issue has been resolved, particularly for the middle school students at Annie Yates, in terms of equality, not just the number, but the quality of the PE engagement, and the ability of the teachers to pay it. That's what, why this prompted our discussion last time about the security, was we heard at least one teacher saying, we hadn't had the stuff. So I think maybe what we need is a PE.
So perhaps we could have a...
Presentation.
Why don't we, yeah, if we could agendize, we, we do have an annual agendized item of sports, but we don't...
This isn't sports.
We don't generally cover elementary, so I think it would be good to agendize that separately. Perhaps the Board President can work with the superintendent to find an appropriate time to agendize that.
Sure. We'll take a look, we'll take a look at that to make sure that you get the presentation, but that's separate from this, from this request, so we'll bring that, we'll bring that back as well. The, but the big picture, the PE is not considered a sport, although students can learn sports during PE. It is an actual state requirement, and it's a bona fide course. So we do have to, we do have to look at the quality of that and examine that, but in terms of, of compliance, right now, we have multiple subject teachers teaching PE and/or, and being supported by an aide who is also delivering PE, sports, games, physical fitness activities, stretching, so on and so forth, to the students K8.
Board Member Williams Muller, did you have a question?
Yes.
Please.
I was wondering, are the students, well, the middle school students?
Speak to the mic.
I was wondering if the middle school students at Annie Yates are getting physical education during their breaks, because most of them are just like walking around and talking, and it's important that they stay active.
Those are questions that would probably be better answered in a more thorough report. I'm just not able to give those specifics.
Okay.
Okay. So why don't we agendize that for a thorough report? And I believe our superintendent has this under advisement, and I will report it back to the Board President as well.
This is all, all the Board would like to have this, so.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Do it as a report.
I have one more question on that. Personnel, hoping to need a computer aide position. What, you currently have someone teaching, what is...
We have a substitute teacher in that, in that space right now.
Okay, so she is a 60-day substitute?
She's there until we get someone in.
So is she on a substitute credential?
Yes, sir.
And those are limited to 30 or 60 days?
Right. So we're working with that the best...
So she's not a permanent aide?
No, she's not. No.
But you're hoping to hire an instructional aide?
An instructional assistant, an instructional assistant.
Is that it is actually?
Say that again?
I don't know what the proper certificate is.
For instructional assistant, they have to pass an instructional assistant exam with the county office, or have, I believe, the 60 semester college units. So there's not just a particular certification for that. If they meet those requirements, and based upon their other education background and experience, that's the individual that we're looking for.
The, yeah, I do take my son every Monday morning to computer lab, and it's, he's the first grade, so it's not really that advanced, but it's, it's basically just typing class, following a computer program, home letters, or, you know. But I'm not seeing facility on, here's how you open the computer, here's how you sign in, or, how you, just, it's typable, so. I don't have backgrounds, but it seems pretty remit.
Okay.
So if you fill that position with someone who has background... So, if you fill that position with someone who has background.
I'm working towards that.
Excellent. Other questions about the human resource department? Hearing none, is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none, let's move to the ed spec for ECL. Thank you very much, Ms. Rell, for your usual thorough and informative report.
All right, so this is another sort of milestone moment that we are, we're here, every, for every school project that seeks state funding, the California Department of Education must review and approve the project plans for conformance with Title V, and they require that the board approve educational specifications, or ed specs, as they're commonly called. These have to be submitted as part of the entire package of materials that they receive, and since the ECL project will, does anticipate applying for state funds in the future, should they become available, it's very important for our project to fulfill these requirements. The educational specifications lay out the design parameters of the project, and gives the educational rationale for the design. This, this first reading of the education specifications, or ed specs draft, is being submitted to you tonight for your, for your discussion with our, our project, ECL project manager, Rory Miller, and any of the comments that you have tonight will be incorporated into the document that will be brought back on November thirteenth. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Dr. Lindo, good evening, board. So I'm going to make just a little bit of additions to the remarks that Dr. Lindo just gave to you. There is a, there is a requirement that the board approve an ed spec, that needs to occur in order for us to then submit that ed spec to the California Department of Education. There's no standard, or mandatory, I should say, format for an ed spec, they come in all different shapes and sizes and configurations. The CDE, the California Department of Ed, doesn't really co-approve the ed spec. In some ways, they don't manage the ed spec, or, or supersede the board, or, or anything like that, they use the ed spec as a source of information to clue them into how a particular district thinks about the educational process, and how that particular district sees educational process reflected in the facility design that they're presenting. So what they do is they take the ed spec and they, they read it, digest it, and then look at the plans before them, the, the actual design plans, to see the correlation between those. The Department of Education's main focus in all of this is to look at Title V requirements, and make sure, they're the entity that makes sure that the plans and specs that we're implementing meet the requirements of Title V. They also are a necessary step, receiving approval from CDE, and the ed spec is part of that, is also a necessary step in being eligible for state funds. So this is something that we want to be eligible for, it's, it has the potential for meaning big dollar returns for the school district, so we want to make sure that we do this process and, and get these approvals done. The plan is to bring this back to you in November, so that you can consider approval. We'll then immediately combine this with a whole series of other materials, and the intent is to make the CDE submittal before the Thanksgiving holidays. That puts us on a track to have all of the agency approvals, including CDE, at about the same time that the architects are complete with the DSA, which is next, probably early March. And then that allows us, that's the, those are the threshold events that allow us to make submittals to the Office of Public School Construction, and those are the funding folks, and that's our ultimate goal, is, is being in line for future state funds. So I think, it, it's a very big document, and as you can see, it's got lots of information, probably more, in many ways, more than most, because we're much farther along, as you know, we're, we're very far along in the design process, we actually have a set of designs that are now being produced in, as blueprints, and in construction documents. So we have lots and lots of information to fill in what's ordinarily concepts, we're far beyond concepts, so the folks at CD are going to have a lot of, of very detailed information to, to look at. The table of contents for the volume that's in front of you gives the basic structure of the ed spec. And the, the table of contents, I pulled this from a, an older, CDE used to have a much more standardized way that they wanted to see and review ed specs. They've become much less rigid about this, but just to make sure that we covered all of the necessary materials, I have used an older version of a table of contents that, that CDE puts out in a publication that says, here's what you need to do in, in terms of developing an ed spec. The basic sections involved, there's a project description section, which talks about the community of Emeryville, in our case, school board policies surrounding facility design and development, the educational programs of the district, staff of the school district, a summary description of the scope of the work of our particular project, along with demographic information and enrollment information. They ask for a recap of budget and funding sources, and they want to have a basic knowledge of the, the schedule of the particular project. And by the way, some districts do ed specs for particular projects, some do a kind of large overview ed spec, and keep that on file with the CDE, and then plug projects into that as they go along. For us, obviously, it's one major project that we're doing, so this is really tailored to be an ed spec for the ECL project. The second big section in the ed spec is, is about project design factors. It covers the design concepts, the building systems that are involved, site considerations for the site that we're developing, the project on, the project delivery method that we're using, in our case, that's a lease leaseback builder that we've hired to help build, construct the project with us. And then, this one is not standard, but since the State Board of Education focused greatly on this when they were approving the city as our joint occupancy partner, I've also included a section on safety and security. I think that's particularly appropriate, not just given the day and age that we live in, but also because we have special considerations that CDE is going to be interested in, because we do have a joint occupancy partner, and how the community and the school populations interface on the facility and during the, the days will matter, and they'll want to be informed about that. The third big section is what's called activity area requirements, that's actually the bulk of the pages of this document, and that takes a very thorough cataloging of all of the different spaces in the, in the program for the facility, and lays out all of the requirements for each of those spaces, how many people it's going to accommodate, what sorts of equipment is in that space, how it's serviced in terms of air conditioning, and heating, and ventilating, and plumbing, and, you know, all of those issues are, are covered by those activity area documents. Fourth is a summary of the area relationships, essentially diagrams, how the facility is going to work, and how the spaces interrelate with each other. In our case, it talks about the educational rationale that, from Ms. Allen and her department, about looping, coring, and block scheduling of students, how those are reflected in the plans of the facility. It looks at the full service community school concept, how that's organized on our particular site, the kinds of program elements that are involved in that. And the, the space relationships are also a part of that discussion. And then finally, I think, and, and maybe in some ways, even most uniquely, in our case, the fifth section talks about a summary of space requirements, and in our case, that space program is a little bit deeper and more intricate than any ed spec I've ever submitted to the CDE before, because we have joint occupants who are sharing time and sharing certain spaces, and so how all of that works together, and the space utilization spreadsheets and matrices that you and the city council have seen over the past couple of years, that's really the focus of that section of the document. All of these different programs, all of these different elements on this site, how do they fit together in terms of time and calendar? That's a, a kind of a high level overview of all of this. If you have any specific questions about the content of specific areas, I'd be happy to answer questions and, and dive into that with you.
Board member Clay, let me start.
Yes, I mean, I think this is a very valuable document right here, and for me personally, and I'm, I didn't, I did not mention this, because to be honest, I had no idea how thick this would be, and, and how much information and detail that it really is. But now that I see it, I mean, for me personally, I would have, would like to, or would have liked to before it came for a first reading, to have a, some type of study session on this document for my understanding, and really, as you said, how it relates to the facility that we're building. So, I mean, because there's so much information in here, and I would like to know how it all relates. And, and by looking through it, I know some of these things we have seen before, in different, in different iterations, but I think just for the understanding and the relationship of the facility, and how CDE will look at it as well, would be very helpful for me personally. But I think it's a very detailed and very informative document.
Again, CDE is going to, I think their, their, their feedback, although they will make specific comments about specific areas, they're going to be, I think, grateful to the board for approving a, a document that has a great deal of information. Again, they don't really edit this, they're not going to ask you to change your mind, I mean, they look at the board as the approving authority. What they'll do is they'll verify and validate that what they see in this document, and what they see in the plans, meets all the requirements of Title V.
I just, yeah, and I, that's not my worry, my worry is that, you know, I don't even know, basically, what I'm sending off and understanding, you know.
Sure.
Everything in this document that I'm sending to CDE myself.
Look, if I, if I could just point out, member, when, as I've gone through the document, I don't see anything in here that hasn't been before the board, at least two meetings previous. So I think what, what I think staff has done is really compiled, I, I did see there's a number of diagrams that take issues that have been discussed thoroughly by the board, and puts them in graphic form, which is, I think, better and more understandable than anything I've seen in the past. But none of it's new, it's, it's just.
I understand that, and I understand that.
Graphics.
And I'm just, you know, from my perspective, just going over it in a study session to really know all what's in here, and what all we've done in the past compiles this very important and, you know, and valuable document.
I'm happy to do that, if you all want it, and you, you have the, the time and, and can make a date, I'm happy to do that, it would be great.
Can I suggest that this, this, this is, it's an agendized item, and this is a good time to, to go through it? I, I think.
I don't think as thick as this document is, we could go tab by tab with a, you know, high, and I'm not talking a deep dive, but a high level understanding of each one of the tabs, and, and how it all relates. I wouldn't want to do that tonight, I wouldn't, I mean, we'll be here too long.
Well, it's only seven thirty, and, and we only have one other item on the agenda, I, I think that staff has.
What's up with other members?
Agendized time, but.
What's the pleasure of the, of the body?
What's the pleasure of the board?
I don't know how to use the mic. I don't, I don't need to go through it, I think it's all information that we've seen, so, but I'm along for the ride.
I was also daunted when I saw how thick the document was, but then I also had the same reaction that I never signed it.
Okay.
When I sat down with it, there was stuff that we see, stuff that's been in front of city schools, policies adopted there, design, and we, we approved.
Okay.
So, I, I, I was left feeling that there's enough time between whatever we want to do tonight and the first reading. We got a second round coming around, too.
Okay.
That, that, the two nights should be sufficient.
Okay, well, if the board's pleasure is that, I'm fine.
Could I make one more comment? I mean, I think, in some ways, this is a, this is a, I don't know, I was going to say a testament, but I, that's not exactly what I mean, it's a, it's a good demonstration of how much and how deep the work has actually been, and over a very long period of time. There are diagrams that I went back and pulled out.
Right.
From two thousand three and two thousand four, and they still are, they, they still are relevant.
Right.
And to me, that's phenomenal, that, that something can be pursued for this long, and the core truths still ring through, is, is, is really remarkable.
All right, well, this is, this can just be pleasure reading throughout.
I, I, I will, I will point the board's attention to one page in particular that I thought enlightening, under tab F, summaries, where it summarizes on page, looks like seven, under the, it's the late off demographics research, which, again, this has come to us in the past, but I was particularly struck on the chart that shows total births to Emeryville residents, nineteen seventy-eight to two thousand eight, and that from two thousand and four to two thousand and eight, the number of births just skyrockets, and I'll, I'll go ahead and just pass this page around, it's probably easier this way. So I, I find that very interesting in terms of where we're going as a city, and, and, you know, we've argued for a long time that if we don't build this, we're going to end up running out of room, and, and when I see this, it just reminds me once again, you know, one of the reasons we're doing this is out of concern that if we don't do it, we're not going to have enough space for the number of kids, because kids are born, and then they get older. My daughters keep reminding me of this, and we need to, to make sure that there'll be room in the future, particularly because Emeryville's general plan states that we're going to grow from a population of ten thousand people to a population of twenty thousand people, so for that reason as well. I do, I had a couple of questions on a couple of sections, but before I go to that, I wanted to see if other board members have questions? Please.
You answered my first one, which is, what is the state expecting and requiring an ed spec? You said it's pretty loose.
They require an ed spec, they don't require a specific format. They require an EdSpec, they don't require a specific format.
Yeah, so that, I wanted to know if we met, in your view, have we met what the state's-
I'm sure we will, yes. And if they come up with a request for additional information, we'll provide it.
Are you getting recorded?
Push your mic.
You get it? Yeah, picking you up? Why? Why? It's quiet. Just an observation is that this is a compilation of a number of different documents. It, as a result, the fonts are all over the place, so I think you could just make that uniform.
Oh, I don't even have access necessarily to all of the Word versions of these things. Most of these are PDFs.
PDFs combined, there's not, I don't know that, you know, the stuff that's diagrams is one thing, but there's a lot of text pieces-
Yeah, from many, from many years, I mean, some of these documents go back four or five years, and what I have are all PDFs. In order to accomplish what you're asking, we'd have to go through and try to convert all of the old PDFs and then, and then make sure that they don't lose format and all that sort of stuff, and then, and then refont them.
So we can't read some of these graphs, they're just in here?
We can't edit them, I guess, but-
Can we read it?
Well, a lot of them aren't my, you know, they're, they are produced by a whole variety of consultants over a whole variety of years. And so you're right, the fonts are whatever those original documents produced at the time.
Okay, well, it looks a bit like a jumble, so maybe it's putting in some clear headers or, you know, blank pages that separate and segment out what's coming afterwards.
Looks so much better than when we used to hand-type everything. We've come a long way.
We have. Specific question was, and I forget what page it's on in here, but at one point, well, I think it's in that big Section 3 where you talk about lighting and landscaping and parking, and the question was, do all those specifics conform to our latest iteration of the design? Because some of those things changed after the Planning Commission was fine, there were just some changes. So I wanted to make sure we're sending them our current version.
Yes, all of the, hm.
And, you know, it's just something to check if you don't know.
Yeah, so what, so I'm just very rapidly in my mind, the things that we may not have completely caught up with are things that are in the Planning Commission's list of conditions of approval, but I, CDE isn't going to notice or, or will they care?
Maybe we can just include the Planning Commission's conditions of approval.
But, but they really don't care. I mean, it's, it's not relevant at all to what their interest is. Their interest is in how are the educational programs of the district reflected in the school design? They don't really care about the 53rd and San Pablo intersection or its signalization. And a great deal of the Planning Commission conditions of approval have to do with issues like that, not like education and how it's reflected in the facility design.
Well, to the extent that we've got documents in here that are part of our EdSpec, I'm thinking around the traffic, I don't, you know-
So what I did was I pulled the SEQA, I pulled the, I pulled the SEQA document that the board approved. So that was the source that I used for talking about those issues, and I did that intentionally because it was a board-approved document.
So you don't think we need to update with, with, you came back to us in August, was it, with some tweaks around the, subsequent to the Planning Commission's? Or maybe it was September?
Yes.
But recently?
Some of those, some of those, the ones that are really kind of site design issues, those have all been picked up. The ones that haven't, like I said, there are some of the Planning Commission conditions of approval that are not thoroughly digested in the plans that the architects are working on at this point. By the way, there's, there's more than one cycle of submittal with CDE. What I'm trying to do right now is make submittal number one, so that we get the process started with CDE. There's also a submittal number two, which will happen when we have approved plans and specs. Those go back to CDE, but CDE still, even then, even, even next February or early March, when all of that exists, CDE is not going to look at the changes that have happened at the intersection of 53rd and San Pablo because they don't care. They're going to focus on what, how, what's the, what's the space program for the facility? What are the sizes of rooms that are in the facility? Are those still true in the final design as submitted by the architects? Those are the things that Title V addresses, and those are the things that CDE is responsible for.
So they won't, they won't care where the play equipment is within the site and the fact that-
No, they, they care that they're, they care about the, they care about, they care about physical education, just as you all do, and you were talking earlier in the meeting tonight. They care about that, they care that there are lots of educational opportunities for students. And we will certainly be able to demonstrate that with the design of this site.
Good.
We will have to submit, so let's do this a little bit more, even a little more thoroughly, even if it's boring. Our site does not meet the standards that CDE uses for acquisition of a new site. But they don't apply those standards to an existing urban site. So what they require is that we do a special rundown, we have to do a special laying out of how our physical education opportunities are accommodated on a site that's smaller than if we were in Livermore and out purchasing a brand-new site for a brand-new school.
Makes sense.
So we'll have to do what's called a PE justification document, because they know we're on a small site, and they know that we can't and won't run PE in the same way that a site that's 40 or 50 acres is going to run PE.
Right. Is that describing here?
It is not, but it's on a separate, there's a separate form, because we will show a site size that is not standard in the way of new acquisition of suburban sites, we'll have an additional requirement where we have to fill out what's called a PE justification form. It's a separate document, and that will also be submitted as part of the whole package, but it's not part of the EdSpec.
Got you. Okay, well, I'm, it sounds like you're addressing the pieces that need to be addressed in terms of what's our current design and educational program.
Yeah, so this isn't, the, EdSpec is not meant to gather together every bit of information. I know it looks like that, but it's not meant to gather together every bit of information about the project. It's meant to focus on those things that CDE is actually concerned about.
Okay, the, the piece that seemed new to me, that I don't remember seeing, is Section 4, the, right at the end, the summary of area.
And what you've seen is a, you've seen encapsul, you've seen kind of, you've seen graphic versions of that because you've seen the floor plans. So what that does is that, that creates as a spreadsheet, every space, every-
I'm not on the spreadsheet yet.
Okay.
I'm on these really nice, full-service community school graphics.
Uh huh. Those are new.
Page 314, they're not new?
They are new.
Yeah, they are, so that's-
Yes.
That's what I'm saying.
Those are new.
What's that in there?
The variant, this page variant, that one. So, and I, I want to spend some more time with them, but my first impression was, these are really good.
Great, thank you.
And that they convey graphically a lot of what we're trying to build with a full-service community school model, so.
If you'll notice what we did, what I intentionally did was, I took the, the section that Ms. Allen drafted, which was Section 1D about the educational rationale, I took her explanation of the district's educational rationale, and I tried to make pictures of that. And so, item by item, whether it's loop core block, whether it's full-service community school, whether it's, whatever it might be, I tried to take each of those, I don't know if I got every single one of them, but I tried to take those major educational rationale concepts and make them into pictures.
Yeah, and-
Very useful.
The, I want to pull out one in particular, and that is the, somewhere around 314, the schools, the student trajectory-
Yes.
Versus, it's-
So that one is meant to depict the power of the K-12 idea.
Yeah, I thought that was the best graphic I've seen of this, maybe you all have seen, I don't remember seeing this before.
No, that's, that's new also.
But I thought the depiction of how the arc of the student's trajectory has more slips in it and gaps when, when you're transferring between schools and different environments, different teachers, different classrooms, over time has an impact versus what we're trying to achieve, which is a much smoother, integrated trajectory with our looping, with our K-12 model, that hopefully, and with cooperation with post-secondary institutions, that gets our students much better prepared at a higher endpoint than they would under-
And the piece of that that's hard to depict as a picture is the also-powerful idea that being on a site with a group of teachers and students for 13 years means that all of those relationships are much longer, much deeper, much more meaningful, and that's the, if there's, if there is a big advantage of being a tiny school district, that's got to be it.
Yeah, and that's page 316 of the PDF, if there are folks at home trying to follow along. And also, I thought the looping core and block, a few pages later, graphic was, was helpful to the explanation. So, so I appreciated those, and I think we need to incorporate those in our, in our communications work, and figure out how to do that. Right at the end, there were two pages, at 319 and 320, on security that seemed incomplete yet, just because they have some kind of fake Latin words in them yet. So I didn't know if you need to update those. Lorum ipsum-
Which page is that?
It's, 319 and 320, they're two pages on security and age separation. And the description is, is just sort of filler language.
Oh, yeah, look at that. ASDF.
Oh, I've, I've yanked the wrong one, I pulled the wrong files. I will, I will correct that for your final, you're right, it's silly Latin.
And then on the, sort of the graphic description of the school use, the second-to-last page, 329, full program usage on weekends, it seemed that was all, if I'm reading it right, community use on the weekends, just because it's all red. Second-to-last page, 329.
It's utilization.
Yeah. And my question is, shouldn't some of that be-
No.
There's no ever school use?
Because that, that is actually what happens on weekends.
Mm-hmm. Well, well, are we not ever, you know, I know occasionally we'll have the drama club come in and want to practice, or-
Sure, and that's why, that's why it shows that all is shared.
So it's shared, it's not, well, I guess, are we going to have the capacity to, for school, you know, not to share it, but for school to come in and students to use school buildings and teachers use school buildings on weekends?
Sure, I mean-
Do we, are we depicting that properly by just calling it all shared?
Well, there's no, there are no, that I'm aware, it doesn't, it doesn't preclude anything, but at least in, as currently imagined and as currently programmed, there are no reserved school classes or courses that occur on those days. It doesn't mean that it can't happen, it just means that there's nothing that's been described currently.
Okay, so I guess these graphs are, depict what's, it's a description, not an estimation.
Well, it's not-
What current programming is, so.
It's not a rule, it's not, it's not meant to be dictating who does what when. These, these space utilization diagrams you have seen before, these are the space utilization diagrams that form the basis of the sharing relationships and the sharing percentages that are being captured in the joint occupancy agreement. They're not meant to be permanent, they're not meant to be unbreakable or absolute, they're meant to be the place that we're starting. It's kind of the, the initial set of assumptions about space utilization as we move into the facility. And then the joint occupancy agreement allows for the continual refinement and alignment of all of that.
So it, I think it might add clarity to any third party looking at this to take the section of the joint use agreement that says that and put it in as a preference and, you know, indicate that these are, you know, preliminary projections subject to the, I forget the name of the committee that's going to modify them every year.
The administrative committee, I think.
Yeah, subject, because as a practical matter, every year-
Programs committee.
The program people will get together and they'll modify this.
And they'll make a schedule.
And so I think it, it might cause some concern from the folks who are reviewing this in Sacramento if they don't understand that this isn't set in stone and that we do have an agreement, even if it's the draft, current working draft.
That's a great idea, I'm happy to do that.
I think we can just put that in as a preference and then put some notation on the actual drawings that indicates it's, you know, preliminary, initial, first-year projection.
Yes, great idea.
I think, I think those are both good suggestions, and, and if we can add to that, that your point about this isn't prohibiting school uses on, you know, weekend hours or otherwise, which does, would seem in education, something, you know, relevant to what you'd want to know in EdSpec-
Yeah.
Can, can-
Sure, no, it's good.
Use the space and-
Good information.
And on the, the legend is unclear, actually, as I look at it now, unless, you know-
The colors don't quite, yeah. That's going to be a color printer issue. I'll have to tweak that.
The purple shared, this should be purple, not red.
Yeah.
Okay, so you make those line up if you can, or at least use words.
Well, I understand our new, our new science teacher, who we'll be introducing in a moment, has, has some skills in those areas.
So, Roy, with all that being said, after you make those revisions to the, to these recharges, can you print me out a bigger edition of this?
Sure.
Yes, just so I can kind of read it a little bit better.
Are there any other questions from board? Yes, please.
Quickly, so, so this utilization chart reflects what will be in our first edition of our joint use occupancy.
Yes.
Agreed?
Yes. The relative percentages show up in the operations and maintenance section and in the capital replacement section. The, those percentages that you see tie into how the space is being utilized.
Yes, I can get a bigger one after the, thank you.
Other, other questions or comments on this? I just had one question. The demographics that are used here are from 2008, '09, and-
Ten, and ten.
Will it be an issue that we're not showing 10, 11, and 11, 12?
Well, so what I did was I pulled the executive summary from the, the 2008, '09 demographic study is much larger than what's actually included in this ed spec. I used the executive summary from that, and then I included the, a memo, an update memo that Lapkoff and Golbale did in 2010. That's actually the most recent run-through of the demographics that we have.
But under the enrollment section and the school description section, there were descriptions of, excuse me while I look through it, from '08, '09, and I just wasn't sure if, you know, we know what our enrollment was in '09, '10, and '10, '11.
Oh, have we gone back and kind of mapped that on to the demographic report? I haven't.
I, I don't know, it's a matter of mapping it on to the demographic report, just in terms of our description of our school and how many students we have.
So what I used there, I went and I pulled, in terms of the enrollment and the mass, the CDE is interested in the enrollment that's related to the project that you're submitting in front of them, and then they're also interested in the-